Thank you.
Many to.
They crash.
They should have demolition derby out there is what they should have done. Just do a demolition derby out there.
With electric cars.
There you go.
Otherwise known as golf carts.
Good evening. I call the order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's planning commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www dot MinnehahaCounty dot org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, July twenty ninth at 5:00 P. M. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, August twentieth at or after nine A. M. The affected parties will be notified of meeting date. Meeting of the county commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the June twenty fourth meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any planning commission member wish you have an item removed for discussion? Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff of the audience. If any member of the staff or audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you time to address the commission later in the meeting. Any other items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the planning commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is approval of the minutes of June twenty fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Item number two is conditional use permit nineteen dash three two to amend. Conditional use permit eighteen dash oh two to allow fireworks during the fireworks season in South Dakota until eleven P. M. And to extend the hours of public operation, P. M., New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, from twelve A. M. to one A. M. On the property legally described as tract three, except H dash one, Crowell's addition, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section thirty six, Township one oh one north, range fifty one west. Petitioner is the Barn Incorporated, Josh and Amanda Nelson. They are also the property owner. The location is four, six, five, nine, four, two sixty eighth street. That is located three miles west of Sioux Falls. Okay, someone's raised their hand, so we'll remove item number two to the regular agenda. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty fourth.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion is made to second it to approve the minutes of June twenty fourth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number two, David?
Good evening, Planning Commission, David Heinold, County Planning Department. Conditional use permit nineteen dash thirty two is to amend conditional use permit in eighteen dash zero two. This is, let me just back up here a second. The property itself is located at four, six, five, nine, four, two hundred and sixty eighth street. As you can see, the property itself is outlined in red on the overhead map. The existing property has, is permitted to allow two event facilities. As you can see in the image, aerial image there on the overhead, there is one barn there. And associated parking areas are located there, too. The driveway to that red shaped property is right in the middle of two existing properties that have been platted off. As you can see in the picture here, you can see the building off to the left and then there's what's permitted to be an additional building to the right, and that was just recently, as of last year. The, currently, the petitioner is only allowed to host outdoor activities and events between the hours of nine A. M. and nine P. M. For these existing facilities. Just going through some of the conditional use permit criteria is that the planning commission goes through in reviewing conditional use permits. One, that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. The proposed extension of hours of operation will have an effect on surrounding properties, their use and enjoyment in the immediate vicinity. The additional hours of operation pose noise disturbances due to lighting of fireworks later into the evening. However, most nights during this, that nine day period, it doesn't get dark enough until nine o'clock, which is when the existing hours of operation are to cease. The, currently, there are no restrictions on residential properties in the immediate area for lighting off fireworks. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Subject property has two existing facilities with those parking areas. A lot, most of the properties in the, the area are either zoned commercial or agricultural as well as other residential properties that are also zoned in the A. One Agricultural District. This property being commercially zoned. There should not be effect on the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant properties since there's no buildings being constructed with this amendment, or proposed amendment. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities are provided. Petitioner has all the utilities, access roads, and drainage in place for the, with the existing buildings on the property, so there's no need for those, any additional infrastructure. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The petitioner is currently meeting those off-street parking requirements for the property for the two event buildings. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed use for lighting off fireworks may cause certain noise disturbances for other property owners at various times throughout the night where the petitioner should take precautions necessary to control offensive odors such as, or offensive nuisances such as noise and other vibration during these activities themselves as they can, can present quite noise disturbances. Six, health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The subject property is located just outside of the transition area of the agricultural production area as identified by the Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. The presence of Wildwater West in immediate vicinity, which is to the nor, directly to the north, as you can see in this picture, on the other side of the trees, brings more of a commercial nature to the surrounding area as well as the other existing commercial, commercially used properties that are located adjacent to this property itself. The site is located adjacent to other residential uses and their proposed use fits with the mix of commercial, agricultural, and residential uses in, in the immediate area. So staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the zoning ordinance in Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit nineteen thirty-two with, there's a couple additional conditions. Number, an additional add-on to number nine, which is amendment for the hours of operation for the public will be between eight A. M. and twelve A. M. midnight. Outdoor events and activities shall be limited to the hours of nine, nine A. M. and nine P. M. And the addition is that the hours of operation for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day for the public shall be between eight A. M. and one P. M. And the additional condition is number ten. Fireworks shall be allowed during the nine day fireworks season until eleven P. M. And then that moves down number eleven. So there are a total of eleven conditions with this proposed amendment. And I'll answer any questions if you have them. I do have some additional pictures if you'd like me to go through them real quick, but a lot of them just basically go through the site photos of the two commercial areas and the road. Which is gravel. And the sign was posted on the property as required by the zoning ordinance as well. So with that, I'm gonna answer any questions.
Any questions for David? Not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address, please?
Josh Nelson, two oh four Park Drive, Lennox, South Dakota, five seven zero three nine.
Any questions for him?
Have you had any interaction with your neighbors about this proposal and?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Okay, if there isn't, we might call you back.
Sure.
Okay. Proponents? Is there any opponents? You please come forward, state your address, please.
My name is Chris Lair. I'm at four, six, five, seven, eight, two hundred and sixty eighth street. I am directly west of them on two hundred and sixty eighth, so I am probably the closest to that property as far as noise and that type of thing. The seasonal fireworks, I would have to agree that there's fireworks going off all around. I don't have to leave my house to go to fireworks. I don't have to come into town. There's plenty around me. The, the issues or concerns that I have are, are they gonna be professionally discharged? Being that there is a full liquor license there, I worry about, you know, if you have individuals that have been drinking there, what would happen? So that is an issue for us, specifically me. Also, it would be nice to be notified, if possible, in writing that this is going to happen because there are individuals that do have rescue dogs that we make considerations for getting our animals outside before everything starts up and that type of thing. This year was a little bit different than any other year. Really, we didn't have a lot of fireworks going on until like the day before. Normally, when the season opens, that's when it starts happening, but that didn't happen this year. So, you know, I would request, if possible, that, you know, we be notified through the mail that, you know, you do have these things coming on so that we can deal with them. As far as the hours go, I don't have any problem with going to eleven P. M. during the time there or New Year's Eve and, and New Year's Day. The other thing that if they are not going to be professionally discharged, which way are they going to light these fireworks? Because just north of their facility and goes across the entire sections of three different landowners, the back part of it is strictly grass land. It, it can't be put into crops or anything like that. And so there is a concern for those, you know, that grassland possibly starting a fire. Obviously, this year it's a little bit wetter, but from year to year, you never know on that. The other thing is, as far as which direction they're gonna go off, I, we have experience that there has been fireworks that were, that went off at Blue Haven Barn about a year ago. And they were professionally done, I believe, is, is what I understand. I don't know for fact. But nobody knew of this and it was out of the season. And, and so there was some concern with that. Obviously, you know, the neighbors are calling each other saying, is that gunshots? Is that gunshots? Well, you know, we were kind of hunkering down and then when you go outside, you see all of these fireworks going off. So that was a concern and we never did, we called the sheriff. There was, you know, he came out and talked to him and talked to us and there was no final report, which we were told there would be a final report that would be sent to us possibly six months, but we never did get one. So, you know, all in all, I guess, you know, what, what we'd like to find out, are they gonna be professionally discharged? Is there a direction that these would go? Obviously, if they go north, it would go towards Wildwater West. Wildwater West, I've lived in my house since nineteen ninety-two and I have never known Wildwater West to do fireworks display, you know, displays at all that I can ever recollect as far as just being Wildwater West. So there is that concern there just to, for those, those types of things, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else secure to speak to this item? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Daryl Bleeker. I'm four, six, five, seven, five, two hundred and sixty eighth street, Sioux Falls. And I, my wife and my family live just to the south of there. And only concerns I would really have would be safety concerns. You know, are, again, are they gonna be lit off professionally or not? And where would they be lit off? Would they be lit off to the northwest since I live to the south? You know, the debris and, you know, they are projectiles and stuff. And are they gonna be landing on my house or on my property? And then who's gonna clean up the mess if, if it is? And, and the nearest fire station, I think, is like six, seven miles away. I, I'm totally guessing, but you know, that's the only thing I have is, you know, are they gonna be professionally done and then which direction? So, and if they want to stay open until one in the morning on New Year's Eve, that makes total sense to me anyway if they want to be open, so. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Guess I'd like to make a comment. I received a phone call also from an individual in that area today, which is Kirk Walters. He had some serious concerns about the discharge of the fireworks, who was gonna do them, and which direction they were gonna go. His biggest thing was safety as well for, I mean, not only you people, you know, with your facility, but any houses that may be around there. I understand this is a wet year, so to speak, but most years at this time, it's usually, there's a ban on burning or anything like that. He also had a concern with the dust control. Apparently, there hasn't been anything applied this year. According to one of the conditions, it does say that it should be applied. He said is needed, but I checked a C. and it said once a year. I, I don't know, just so you know, I don't know the conditions out there at all. But he, you know, just raised the questions mainly. He was really concerned about the safety. Petitioner, you wanna come back up here, please? Are you aware of their concerns, I mean, about who might be doing this fireworks thing and?
Well, after we had the, the incident last year, we actually changed our contracts around of where you do need a professional to set them off. And I'm not sure if, that would be a question for my wife if it was a professional last year or not. I'm not a hundred percent sure. She does all the contract stuff, but I know it's changed now to where you can't do fireworks at all on her property anymore. And, and I wouldn't have a problem with any of their concerns. I'm, I'm assuming if a professional sets them off, they would gauge the wind and, you know, how they would land and stuff and I, I can't comment on that. I'm not a professional at that. For the dust control question, though, I was in contact with Alan Ripentrop with Lincoln County, 'cause they maintain that road. And he said it, it's just a matter of, the road condition is terrible right now. After you turn off a Highway seventeen, it's a mud pit. And he said as soon as that's able to get under control, they'll do the dust control like they do every year and, and it's their responsibility as far as they're concerned.
Do you have a problem at all with maybe, you know, when you do the fireworks thing? I, I didn't hear about, I think the timeframe that you were gonna do them and everything. I don't think anybody had, even the call I took. They, they weren't concerned about your hours so much as a fact. When you're gonna do them, could you notify maybe? I mean, you know, it's kind of like a
Not a problem.
good neighbor policy, so to speak.
Absolutely.
I think that that constitute both your business and the people that live around you, especially, like I, she said, if you have service dogs or even little kids, I mean, I, I, I'd wanna be aware of that myself.
Oh, you bet.
You know, because
I don't have a problem with that.
We've got, we've got the law now that they can carry a gun now without a permit, so you just don't know what's happening anywhere, it seems like. So it just goes, I think that's just a good neighbor policy to have. If you, I mean, if you and your wife are
Absolutely.
postcard or something, just say, we're to be doing it this amount of time and if they know it, then you're good to go.
Yeah, that sounds fair to me.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, are you gonna have that as a condition then, or did he ask to have that added? Did they notify the neighbors? And that, that they be professionally discharged or they have a professional discharged then?
Any comments, any commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Mike?
My only thought is I do agree that, you know, that the professionally discharged is probably a, a good requirement for the multiple reasons that the neighbors have brought up. And, you know, I would tend to believe, too, that a professional would gauge, you know, where the most appropriate area to set that particular display is based on the conditions that day. So I really don't wanna put anything that says you can only discharge from the southeast corner, 'cause that might not be the best condition. However, I do think that the professionally discharged is a good condition. Now, my only concern with notification, and I think that it is, I would recommend absolutely that for, you know, be a good neighbor, be a good steward, obviously. But if we do put that condition in there, I think we're gonna have to put some condition of how far out and, you know, so far in advance, it means there's always these things of, well, I was a quarter of a mile away and my neighbor was a third of a mile away and he didn't get the notification, but I still heard him. And so I think that we're getting down into a, a muddy water situation with the extent of notification. But I do think it is something that you should do as a, a good steward. So I guess my recommendation would be to add the condition for professionally discharged fireworks, but not have anything for notification. But I do again, I think that it's incumbent upon you to do that.
Set a motion?
Madam, Madam Chair.
Jeff?
I wonder if just posting that, you know, impending fireworks Thursday night or whatever, you know, that, that at least the closest neighbors would be driving by and would have a chance to see it. You know, so if there was a sign just like our, our zoning sign.
If you posted, I'm assuming you might have social media? Yeah, I know the help.
I, I would second Mike's thing, Mike's motion about the, the one part and just suggest noticing it, social media or a sign on the property.
Okay, so we're adding the condition for?
Let's restate it.
Yeah, please.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve as in order with the two additional conditions. One being that the, the fireworks display be professionally discharged. And two, that either a sign be posted or a social media post occur to notify the neighbors of a display.
That's what I was gonna second.
Okay, a motion is made as seconded to approve the conditional use permit nineteen dash three two. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Your agenda. Conditional use permit nineteen dash two eight to allow seed and chemical sales on the property legally described. It's tract nine, Grimace addition, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section thirty-four, Township one oh one north, range forty-eight west, and southwest quarter, southwest quarter, section thirty-five, Township one oh one north, range forty-eight west. Colton Grimace, Sandra Grimace is the property owner, located approximately four miles east of Sioux Falls, four, eight, two, four, eight, two sixty eighth street. David?
Good evening, David Heinold, County Planning Department. Item number eight is conditional use permit nineteen dash twenty-eight is to allow seed and chemical sales on the property, which is actually at four, eight, two, four, eight, two sixty eighth street. This property is located just to the, the driveway to where the petitioner is requesting to allow the seed and chemical sales is about a quarter mile to the west of that address to the driveway. As you can see, the, the whole property is twenty-eight point twenty-eight acres, is outlined in red on the, the overhead map, as you can see there. This conditional use permit request, as you recall, was heard at the June twenty-fourth planning commission meeting. However, there was a notification issue that we caught with that needs resolution. And the applicant was notified and we sent them the correct mailing addresses for the property owners that are located across the street in state line in Iowa that are within five hundred feet, which is a total of three property owners. One of which is the property directly across the street, the drive, from the driveway location to the south. The, an appeal letter was filed by the surrounding property owner, but staff felt this was necessary to bring it back to the county planning commission to, for consideration in accordance with the zoning ordinance. And I would, the, so staff recommends the same. Staff finds the proposed use for seed and chemical retail sales is an appropriate use for the surrounding area and conforms to the goals and policies of the Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit nineteen dash twenty-eight with the, a total of eight conditions, which are the exact same conditions. And I can go through some of the pictures and some of the criteria as well, if you'd like me to. If there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David? Guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Colton Grimace, two, six, six, seven, four, Brownstone Avenue, Rowena, South Dakota, five, seven, zero, zero, five.
Any questions for him?
Have you visited with your neighbors about this? Have you managed to talk to them over about the, the issue of the driveway or the, the visual?
I haven't been in contact with either one that were here last time.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you. We may call you back. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Come forward, please state your name and address, please.
Dan and Amy Akis, Valley Springs, currently, South Dakota. That's my, that's my wife here. I guess our, our comments kind of come from the last meeting that we had. I don't know that we would call ourselves as opponents to what is gonna have, proceed to happen. Just main concerns are kind of stemming from the last meeting as well. The perception that our property value would stay the same or not decrease. And I, I feel that from the research that we have done, we feel that that's not a true statement. So once again, we're not, you know, we're not here to, you know, try to total annex the whole thing, but we were just wondering, you know, what can be done to ease our concerns. The site is right next to our property line to the west there, our east property line, their west property line, and right in the corner by the road. Pretty much just mainly wondering if there could be an alternative site on, for this, for this building and, Ben's site. Just open to any thoughts or suggestions on that, so.
Any questions for him?
Yeah, I got just one. This is just a minor one. Are you more concerned of the unknown? You do not know what it will be like?
You, you could say that's part of the concern. Some of the concern is, you know, who holds everybody accountable for what, you know, was, was said to be done and what actually happens? You know, who, I just don't wanna have any problems at all, really. You know, like I said, we're not You know, like I said, we're not, we, we under, my wife and I understand we all have to make a living and, you know, on the same token, I, I hope the same respect is shown back to our end of it because, you know, this is something that we, we're hoping sooner than later to hopefully have our own place sitting there. We have owned it since two thousand and seven and I think we get a little more anxious every year to do something, so. But yeah, a lot of it is, is the unknown. You know, depending on, I, I guess we just would like to know what, what could be done to, to ease that, if anything. I understand, you know, with, with respect to their site, it's probably is the, the best place to put that on their piece of ground there, less dirt work. I, I get it. I get it that it's expensive, I mean, we all know that. However, you know, what, what cost are we going to incur? Or what's, what, what's deferred to us if, you know, to our property value? If we so happen to decide we don't want to build or live there beside a, a chemical, you know, a seed and chemical sales area, so.
And how, how big is your property that you own?
Ours is six point six acres, that includes the, the ditch and the highway, I believe.
Okay.
So, I would say it's about six, we, we currently farm it right now.
Yeah.
So, it isn't a big piece of ground to farm, but that's what we do.
I mean, if we would put in there, he has to plant trees on the, his west border, would that be something that would kind of, you would agree with, that would help?
I think that would help. I understand, you know, trees next to a building, you know, for his, for, for their sake is probably not the nicest thing either, you know, we all know what tree roots and stuff can do, but, yeah, I mean, it probably would help. And on the same token, we could probably put a tree line in as well, you know, but we, I guess, especially this year, I hadn't had the time or the thoughts or the energy to do so. So, and then, like I said, if we, if we currently do decide to sell it, we, we do have a for sale sign, since the last meeting, we did put up our sign to, for sale by owner sign, just, just to get the ball rolling if we don't like what's going to happen. So, I think that'd be something we might have to discuss, you know, maybe amongst ourselves. I, I don't, I know how much work it is to get a building site and, and everything approved, but I just would wonder if there's a, if there's a plan B, you know, a different spot on the property. We know that the driveway there, you know, that's, our driveway is not very far from that. You know, you're going to have semis turning on there. I, obviously, kids and children aren't supposed to be on the road, but we all know that, you know, we have two young ones too, you know, if we build there. It's, it's just a somewhat of a concern. We're pretty thorough on teaching our kids the rules of the road though, so it's not a huge concern, but you never know who's not paying attention as well, you know, so.
Well, I do feel like, I mean, what they brought up, that it is concerning that, I mean, we, we were notified, you know, we were notified, but the other neighbors within five hundred feet were not notified. I mean, that's kind of, it would have been, I mean, like we talked about last time too, we're not doing ill harm and like we want to, you know, we're obviously supporting each other, but, you know, why were two neighbors not?
That's why we're correcting it tonight. They were sent notice tonight.
Sure. But, I mean, it'd just be interesting, like we, we were the only ones that got the notice, so.
They were sent notice for this meeting tonight. All the people within five hundred feet, including the people in Iowa, were sent legal notice.
That was why it was deferred. From my understanding, yeah, brought back, yeah, okay. Any other questions for him? Thank you. Petition, you want to come back up, please? Okay. I, I guess I hear his concerns. Are you opposed to putting up some trees or?
No, I'm not opposed to putting up trees. Between what I have on the site there, between the gravel and the property line is forty feet. I mean, that's plenty of space to put a tree line.
Two rows of trees, yeah.
But, I mean, it's take a while for trees to get big enough to block much, so, okay.
We all understand that. It might help with being the good neighbor versus, you know, working together, which apparently, I mean, I don't think you've come together yet from what I understand here. Any other questions, commissioners? You're aware of all the conditions that were applied to this, right, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would ask Scott's staff a question, if there would be a recommended tree to plant? Because I think this condition should be added for trees. Scott, is there, is there a recommended tree to use?
Well, typically, you know, I would do like one row of, like an evergreen and one row of a deciduous tree, like a maple or linden or seedless cottonwood, anything, not ash trees.
Well, so I think that's going to be my motion, is to approve this with the addition of a windbreak of trees to the west, mangling deciduous and coniferous trees.
Two rows, is that what you want?
One row each of, yeah. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion made and seconded to approve, item number three, conditional use print nineteen dash eight with a condition, additional condition of adding two rows of trees to the west. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Can that be contingent on them keeping the property? Or, I mean, if they sell the property?
We don't.
No.
I think we should give the condition there because it's just going to bother the next property owner. I see what they want to do, but.
Sorry.
It's sorry, it's already done deal. Okay, we have no old business, Scott, you had some new business?
Yes. So at the last meeting, I had generally suggested that I would start looking for a, a venue for our summer meeting, you know, a, a get together. And I had thought that maybe we could meet at the Safari Bar at Renner. They have a nice deck on the north side of the building, it's out in the county. So what I wanted to find out was some dates maybe or days of the week that would work best for the commission and then I can go to the Safari Bar and find out, you know, get what, so would you like to meet like on a Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? And then we would meet between now and the next meeting. And I have my calendar pulled up here. Let's see, there's. So, Labor Day is the second, so we could meet, and our commission meeting is the twenty-sixth of August, so I would, would you like to meet like that week before the, the, the twenty-sixth or what's your thoughts? Okay, so.
How about?
What night?
I guess I would prefer it later in the month, we got the fair here to deal with in the first week or two, so.
Well, we could push it out till after Labor Day, too.
I think the week, is that the week of nineteenth?
Nineteenth is the week.
Oh, school starts that week, that week there too.
Was it the twentieth?
I think so.
The fair, though, are you talking about the state fair?
No, I'd like to get it done before, in between the Sioux Empire and the state fair would be all right.
So when is the Sioux Empire Fair done?
Uh, the tenth or whatever, that Saturday of August.
Saturday or Sunday, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't know, Saturday or Sunday, I don't know, you don't care. No. No.
So do you want to meet the week of the twelfth? And then I can talk to the Safari Bar, like what they're, would, like, I'm assuming, are they having church nights in the middle of the summer still? I don't know.
No Tuesday for me, please.
No Tuesday, so.
And I'm gone all that week till Thursday. That week, I, I'm out.
We talked about two weeks now.
So do you want to meet like on a Friday night, the sixteenth?
Works for me because it'd be just me and my wife coming.
That way you don't have to plan anything.
I'd leave my girlfriend at home.
Okay, I'll see, I'll, we'll try for this, a Friday night, the sixteenth, if that's okay. I'll see what I can arrange with. So I'll send out an email to everyone, if that works, and I'll arrange it with the Safari Bar. That's all, that's all I have for it.
Move adjournment.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.